All right, good evening, everyone. My name is John Toth. I'm the school business administrator. I'd like to welcome you all to the annual January 2nd, 2025, Board, Edison Township Board of Education Reorganization Meeting. Right now, I will read the winning candidates for school board as of 2024 November. Candidate Ralph Eriko, eighteen thousand one hundred and eight votes. Candidate Jerry Shi, seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-five votes. Candidate Ronak Patel, eighteen thousand five hundred and forty-one votes. I now have here with us Congressman Gottheimer to administer the oath of office. First, we have Mr. Ronak Patel. Please step up.
I'm Josh. What's up, man? What's your name?
Right over here. Beautiful. Yep. How are you?
And you raise your right hand. You raise your right hand. There you go. Ready? I, Ronak Patel.
I, Ronak Patel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitutions of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ronak Patel.
I, Ronak Patel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
I possess the qualification.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Board of Education.
And then I am not disqualified.
I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Were pursuing to.
RS.
RS.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of a crime.
Of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed.
In NJSA.
In NJSA.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And then I will faithfully.
I'm faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I brought this from Washington for you, a certificate. And this, we flew a flag over the United States Capitol in your honor. This went above the Capitol, literally, in your honor of this office.
Oh, thank you.
With this certificate recognizing that this flag flew in your honor. And here is, so we'll hold this up into a picture together if everyone wants to get in. You'll move this a little bit. Okay. I would like to call up now Mr. Ralph Eriko. Congratulations again. Okay. I, Ralph Eriko.
I, Ralph Eriko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ralph Eriko.
I, Ralph Eriko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS nineteen.
RS nineteen.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And then I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Come on, you crushed it. Let me give you this. We'll do a family picture here.
Here, wanna hold the flag? Hold the flag? Thank you. Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
I would now like to call Mr. Jerry Shi. I, Jerry Shi.
I, Jerry Shi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
And the Constitution of the state.
Of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jerry Shi.
I, Jerry Shi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of Board of Education.
And then I am not disqualified.
And I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to RS.
Pursuant to RS.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of a crime.
Of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And then I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Is it okay if I say just a couple of words? You know, they brought me out here, so I gotta give you your money's worth. Seriously, Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you so much to the Board for having me and the Board leadership. I'm very grateful. Superintendent, thank you so much. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Congressman Josh Gottheimer. I represent northern New Jersey, the top part of the state. So it's great to be here. Bergen County, Passaic County, Sussex County. It's not far away. I urge you to visit. And it's really an honor to be here as we continue our work in this great new year together to make Jersey an even better place to live, to raise a family, to go to school, of course. Our great schools, we've got the best in the country in New Jersey. We've got the best educators in the country. We're very blessed and lucky to live in this great place. I want to thank all the local leaders in Edison. And I want to congratulate again, not only the people who got sworn in today, but everybody who has made this happen, all the family members and friends. And please give everybody a big round of applause. And to all the Board members, I will tell, I want to say thank you to all the spouses and the kids. It's a lot of time that you give. It's a lot of yourself. It's a big sacrifice that you make, but also your families make. My wife reminds me about this all the time. In fact, I'm headed tonight to Washington to get sworn in for my term tomorrow in Washington. So I'm excited. And my, you know, my wife reminded me, you know, I've got a twelve-year-old son and a fifteen-year-old daughter. So we're in the thick of it in the school, so I know what everyone's going through. You know, we just have such great public schools here in Jersey and a diverse community and friendly neighbors. And Edison is a perfect example, I believe, of how much Jersey has to offer. In fact, our schools here have educated some of the greatest minds in the past and continue to. All of our future leaders are coming out of here, so many of them. It's a great place. We've got astronauts. Mark Poliski was here. David Bryan graduated here. I don't know if any of you knew him. He was a songwriter and keyboardist for Bon Jovi. So you've got talent all across the place. As some of you know, Edison is the home, of course, at Thomas Edison's famous Menlo Park Laboratory. I'm, you know, I'm a bit of a nerd for history. I've read a lot of books about Edison. He, you know, not only perfected the light bulb and recorded sound for the first time, but he once said, "There's a better way to do it. Find it." And I think, you know, both between Jerry and Ralph and Ronak, they will continue not just to do things better. They will always look for new ways to find and discover for our schools to make them better. I know everyone here does, the school board does, and everyone in Edison Township Public Schools do to try to make things always better for our kids. Because, listen, we're all here for our kids. You saw a couple of them today for our future, right? It's all about them. And that's what this is about, really, for all of us. You know, I think you start to get to an age, you realize it's not about us. It's about the next generation and making sure they're prepared so we can compete and win as a country. We live in the greatest country the world's ever known, right? By far. And when we put our country first, which I'm always very focused on, put aside party, put the country first, work together and realize that we're all in this together, we do so much better. When we solve problems together and work together. And I'm on the Intelligence Committee in Washington, not because I have extra intelligence. But that's where we oversee, like, the CIA and the NSA, all the drones. Kidding about the drones. But what I realize is, you know, you see all these people who want to do us harm around the world every day. And you realize just how blessed we are to have the best men and women protecting us here at home, around the world, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our first responders, our servicemen and women, a lot of them who couldn't be home during this holiday with their families. And it's because, and you realize at the end of it, it's because we have this gift that they're protecting, the flag, our democracy, what we have. And we should never lose sight of that, right? Of this gift that we all have. But it comes from teach, it's education. That's the base of it all, teaching people, like, right? Giving them information so they can, we can grow and succeed and be ready for the next generation. So anyway, I just want to say Jerry, Ralph, Eric, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. I do want to say a couple of words about each of them because Jerry, for the last ten years, has been committed to public service with a passion that, you know, drives him to make a difference every day. He's lived in Edison, been married for thirty-two years. Diane, thirty-two years, which is pretty impressive. They've never had a single fight in thirty-two years. Their son Andy received a PhD from my alma mater, actually. And his daughter Heidi is a captain in the US Army, which is amazing. You know, amazing. So I don't know if it's Harvard or the US Army, which is better, but they're both pretty good. We thank her for defending our freedoms. That's what I think.
Always.
Always the Army over Harvard, by the way. Any day of the week.
Yes.
But seriously, thank you for defending our freedoms. As a member of the Edison School Board, when COVID hit our communities, Jerry, you know, led efforts, fundraising efforts to get gift cards and ensure our kids could have meals and provide for the community. And reflecting on how hard the pandemic was, Jerry said, "It's also showcased the resilience of our community and our commitment to finding solutions in the face of adversity." And that's how he's always led. And as someone, as you may know, I'm always focused on making life more affordable for families. Jerry's been right there on the Zero Tax Increase Initiative in Edison. He helped secure more than $100 million historic investment to renovate the school district without costing a nickel to Jersey taxpayers. I love that. Excellent job. And he's a huge Buffalo Bill fan. We're not going to hold that against him. I applaud for saving money and lower taxes, not for the Bills. Let me be very clear. You've been instrumental, Jerry, in the fight to raise our investment into our most important resource, our children. And I know you'll continue to do it in a fiscally responsible way and set our district up for more long-term success. Congratulations again. I do want to talk for a second about Ralph, if you don't mind, who's been a resident of this great community for thirty-three years. Ralph's wife, Donna, and their three children, Nicholas, Michael, and Danielle, are all graduates of the same Edison Public School system that Ralph has been a dedicated supporter of and leader of. For more than twenty-three years, he's been an educator, currently teaches math. And as the son of an educator myself, I know how much that sacrifice takes every day. And as we were just talking about, his knowledge extends beyond just the classroom, his coach, soccer, basketball, football, baseball, softball. Not only does he serve as the Mid-Atlantic Regional Commissioner and on the International Board of Directors for Babe Ruth, but he's been a volunteer for Babe Ruth and Cal Ripken Baseball and Softball for thirty years, overseeing games across states in the Mid-Atlantic and even helping to run the World Series for different age groups of boys and girls in his free time. I don't know what that is, but in his free time. I just want to thank him for, as an educator on the school, and being on the school board and helping make this community stronger and better. I know he'll continue to do so to find further success in 2025 in supporting the faculty and staff and improving our facilities here and ensuring our children receive the quality education as they ever do in Edison. Congratulations again. You call balls and strikes every day.
And I'm a Steeler fan.
What's going on here? Is it in the water at the school board? Really? Steelers are tough fans. You know. Exactly. Finally, I want to mention a few things about the newest addition to our Township Board of Education, Ronak, who has been a resident for seventeen years and is a proud parent of an Edison student. Ronak has been an active member of the PTA, helping lead book fairs, clothing drives, and charity work. He's someone who always keeps others in mind, donating blood every three months, which we're very grateful for helping others that way. He'll be giving blood in a new way here. With experience as an accounting and operations specialist, as an international staff accountant, I know that he will make a great impact on Edison students, as ever. As Ronak told me, quote, "Whether it's improving school infrastructure, expanding opportunities, or engaging the community, every step we take in education builds a better future for everyone." And I think that speaks very loudly to what you believe and your values and what you're going to do. I know you spend your free time with your wife and taking your son swimming and to Taekwondo classes and to play soccer. On top of all this, one of the most impressive things about Ronak is that he's tri-lingual, which is very impressive. If you tell me you are not a Giants or Jets fan, we're gonna have to talk about this.
I watch cricket.
Cricket. Aw, man. Way to dodge it there, man. Ronak, with your knowledge and dedication to Edison, I have no doubt that you will find success in your goals of addressing overcrowding and ensuring all our classrooms have air conditioning and tutoring and after-school programs, all without increasing taxes, more affordability, lower taxes, helping our families here in Edison every day. I love the spirit. I love the energy. Congratulations on your election and to all of you. God bless. God bless our great country. Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Congressman. We're going to take a short ten-minute recess. If anyone would like to take a picture or feel free to step out and grab a glass of water or something. We'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. All right, we're going to bring the, thank you. We're going to bring the meeting back to order. Next up, I will be calling, roll. Mr. Eriko.
Here.
Mr. Lugo. Thank you, corrected. It's next item. You guys, that's why I'm not the board president. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
We have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2024. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the Board and applicable state law. First order up for business will be to call for nominations for president. Do I have a nomination for Board President? Mr. Patel.
Yeah. I would like to nominate Jerry Shi for the Board President.
Do I have any other nominations for Board President? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Joseph Romano.
Any other nominations? Other? Okay, members of the Board, you have your paper ballot in front of you. Once you complete that, please pass it forward so that I may tally. I have a vote for Mr. Vishal Patel from. Sorry, sorry, I thought they all came forward. I thought they were, my bad.
I read the process.
Oh, you read?
Yep. Not well. Not well.
Very good. Okay. Okay, we have a vote for Mr. Vishal Patel for Mr. Jerry Shi. We have a blank.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Vishal.
Yeah, Vishal. Yep. I have a ballot with no BOE member's name on it, but this is, obviously, I'm assuming Mr. Joe Romano, voting for Mr. Joe Romano.
That's me.
Okay. We have a vote for Mr. Jerry Shi from Mr. Jerry Shi. We have a vote for Mr. Chris Lugo for Mr. Joseph Romano. We have a vote for Ms. Anjana Patel for Mr. Jerry Shi. We have a vote for Mr. Ronak Patel for Mr. Jerry Shi. We have a vote for Mr. Jerry Shi for Mr. Jerry Shi. Well, one of them looks like it was blank, so someone didn't fill their name out.
That was me, probably, for Mr. Shi.
Okay, that would be, so Ms. White is for Mr. Shi. Noted. Mr. Eriko has one vote for Mr. Shi. And Ms. Peng is a vote for Mr. Jerry Shi. Congratulations, Mr. Jerry Shi, for being elected Board President.
All right. So can I have a nomination for Board Vice President?
I'd like to nominate, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go first, yeah. I would like to nominate Chris Lugo.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. Vishal Patel.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. So you have a paper ballot in front of you. Please, you know, write in who you're voting for.
Okay, I have a vote for Mr. Ronak Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. I have a vote for Mr. Christopher Lugo for Mr. Christopher Lugo. I have a vote for Ms. Anjana Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. I have a vote for Mr. Vishal Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. I have a vote from Ms. White for Mr. Lugo. I have a vote for Mr. Romano for Mr. Lugo. I have a vote for Mr. Eriko for Mr. Lugo. I have a vote for Mr. Jerry Shi for Mr. Vishal Patel. And I have a vote for Ms. Shannon Peng for Mr. Vishal Patel. Congratulations, Mr. Vishal Patel.
Public comments? Yeah, public comments for resolutions only. Any public with comments about resolutions? The only resolution is about meetings. The meetings. That's the only resolution. Any comments about the meetings? The school board meetings? Okay, go ahead. AJ.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Congratulations, Mr. Shi, for being a president. And Vishal Patel as Vice Chair or Vice President. The new Board Member, Ronak Patel. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have very high hope from this Board.
AJ.
And I was surprised with the voting that happened, but hopefully, we will all forget about the differences. We all come together as one body and work towards the benefit of students, parents, and the taxpayers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So any other comments about the meetings for the coming school year? Oh, oh, okay.
I'm not used to this, I'm sorry.
Happy New Year to all and congratulations to all our new members. Old faces and new faces, Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. I see we're doing a tour of Edison for our meetings this year. I'm just, did you guys take into account when the certain meetings are going to be, when you're going to have, like, recognition for students, that they're, you know, at, like, maybe Edison High or JP, that it's a big enough auditorium? When you have teacher recognition? Is that going to be at, you know, one of the high schools so we have the space for it? And I see that JP Stevens is in March's meeting. The auditorium's going to be done by then? Those are just a couple of questions, was that like taken into account, those recognition nights and that they're at the schools that are big enough to hold? Those audiences, because we have a lot of kids that we always recognize for all their good deeds. That's my only question, thank you.
Okay. I don't need to ask superintendent, I think the answer is yes and yes.
That is correct.
Knowing Eddie, it's definitely yes. Okay, now we have, uh, okay. Open discussion, board members, uh, board member comments, so, anyone? Uh, oh, yeah, we didn't vote for the resolution, sorry. Okay, roll call, I am sorry.
Let's get a motion.
Just get rusty, you get rusty after here. I'm so sorry.
I make a motion?
Mr. Eriko.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Eriko, Peng.
Okay, Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
President Shi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now, we have, uh, board member comments. So, board members, anyone, okay, Ginny.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to the meetings, and she's right that they're all over the place now. But just, you know, my own opinion, you know, and I'm just one person.
Ginny, Ginny.
One person, uh, I think, or it, I think they should be held at the high schools as they have been. This, you know, we, the high schools are big, they can accommodate. The seats are comfortable for the people that come. We have those big screens when we do our presentations, whi- which we do quite often. And thirdly, it's set up so much better for Patrick and the boys with their, um, you know, with their video. I think we should take that into consideration. I know they want to show up the new, uh, you know, the new gyms and auditoriums that we put in, and they are beautiful, they're gorgeous, you could take my word for it, I've seen them. Uh, but honestly, I think, you know, in my own opinion, that I think it would be best if we kept them at the high schools. Right now, we have just Edison High, but when JP is up and running, you know, that's gonna be a good thing. But, you know, I'm just one, so, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Chris.
Yeah, I would just like to wish, uh, a hearty congratulations to our three new board members, Mr. Jerry Shi, uh, Mr. Ronak Patel, Mr. Eriko, uh, Mr. Ralph Eriko, and to our newly elected, the president, Mr. Shi, and, uh, vice president, Mr. uh, Mr. Patel. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish everybody here and the rest of our Edison residents and our students, I hope everyone had a great holiday season, and just wanted to wish everybody a very happy, healthy, and safe, prosperous new year.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yeah, Ronak.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all those who are here today to attend the swearing-in ceremony. Congratulations to Jerry Shi for getting elected as a president and Vishal Patel for getting elected as a vice president for BOE. I'm not only very excited, but it's very high privilege and honor to be a board member at this time and to serve for the wonderful Edison parents, students, teachers, staff member, under the wonderful leadership of Dr. Alderelli. I'm very thankful to the voters of Edison who put their faith in myself and my team and got us elected with such an incredible margin. I'm very thankful to my family supporting me tremendously during my election. Further, I would like to thank all my friends who helped me during my election, especially former BOE president Beryl Patel, who inspired me to run for this position and mentored me all the way through the process. It is hard to fulfill his position for myself, but I will keep getting guidance from him, the current board members, and superintendent to serve the district the best. One of my huge passions is helping the taxpayer, and I will work hard to commit towards fiscal responsibility. Being a parent of a child attending first grade in Ben Franklin School of Edison, I'm very passionate about education and I have a huge faith in our teachers and staff members who put tireless, tireless effort in our efforts in our educational system. I have a lot of respect for you all, and I look forward to working with you all and help in any way I can. I would like to thank everyone of you who are here, Councilman Rich Brasher, Councilman Ajay Patil, Congress, Congressman Josh Goth- Gotham, Goth- Heimerd, who was gracious enough to give us oath of office, member of ETA, the entire administrative team, and member of public. Any parent who needs anything, I'm here to help in any way I can. I look forward to work with, with the superintendent and fellow board members to continue our district's sign and student tree. Thank you, everyone, once, once again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Happy new year, everyone. Nice to see everyone right here and all new members, welcome to board. Congratulations Jerry as a president and vice president Vishal Patel. I know Jerry Shi, I don't need people to know like too many years and years, but I need some moment to know people. So I know Jerry Shi, I don't know Ralph, but let's see, we work together. And I know Ronak Patel, I always see him temple, right? So I don't wanna say much, but just work as a team, we have some goals in this year. So I hope two thousand twenty-five is good for us, so we can achieve some goals. Right? So if any help, just reach out to us. And once again, we have a great team. Dr. Alderelli, all administration team, this is great, trust me. We don't need to tell them what to do, they do their job. So, please reach out to us if you need any help. We would like to thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you, Anjana. Any other board members? Can I go? Yeah.
Well, I, so I wanna wish happy new year to everybody and, uh, congratulations to all the new board members. I wanna thank all the board members for electing me and trusting me to serve as a vice president, and I'm looking forward to work with everybody as a team. I also want to express my gratitude to administrator, teachers, and parents, uh, for their dedication for, for the school district and improving school district. Um, just like Edison, you know, township is vision, I know my vision and my passion is to innovate, uh, sorry, inspire our students to be the best version of themselves, um, to innovate, to solve the problems that we are gonna face for the dynamic future, and to elevate the entire community for the growth and, and, uh, opportunity for everybody. I'm, I'm committed, um, to serve the community with my passion and relentless effort towards the growth. And I have no doubt with, with, uh, one team, as in a one community, one team, we can, uh, aspire and achieve the brighter future for our students, for our teachers, for parents, and then for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board member comments? All right, see, none, I, I have a statement I'd like to make. I am truly honored to stand before you today, not just as a newly elected member of the Edison Board of Education, but also as the upcoming president of this esteemed board. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the community of Edison for placing your trust in me and my team, um, uh, for the school board. Together, we form a dedicated team committed to the education of our children and the betterment of our schools. I would also like to take this moment to express my special gratitude to Congressman Josh Gothimer for swearing me in and swearing me and my fellow running mates in. We support and, your support and commitment to our community's education, you know, future mean a great deal to all of us. First, I want to acknowledge my fellow board members who have joined me in this journey. Each of you brings unique perspectives and experiences I deeply respect. As we move forward, I believe it is essential that we set aside our differences and work collaboratively to achieve our common goals, let me repeat that again. I believe it is essential that we set aside our differences and work collaboratively, collaboratively to achieve our common goals. Our primary mission is to put the interests of our students first. By uniting our efforts, we can create an environment that truly embodies our model, inspire, innovate, and elevate. Our commitment to inspire each and every student begins with creating a welcoming and supportive environment for our teachers and staff. They are the backbone of our educational systems, and where they feel valued and supported, our children are positioned to survive, thrive. To elevate our educational standards, we must also provide our educators with continuous training and resources. This includes equipping them with the necessary knowledge to handle new technologies and adapt to the evolving needs of society. By investing in our teachers, we are ultimately investing in our students' futures. As in, as we embark on this journey, I want to outline a vision that will guide our work over the coming year and beyond. Our platform priorities, continuing school expansion, enhancing our facilities, ensuring equitable access to transportation, and enriching educational programs will be at the forefront of our agenda. We have a shared responsibility to ensure that our educational system not only meets the current needs of our students, but also prepares them for the challenges of tomorrow. This means providing vocational training and STEM opportunities that align with the evolving job market, as well as supporting our extracurricular programs that help foster teamwork, leadership, and personal growth. I want to emphasize our commitment to our students and families. Our pledge to uphold parental rights is fundamental to building a collaborative and constructive relationship between the school and the community. We want to ensure that our voices, we want to ensure your voices are heard, that you feel supported throughout your children's educational journey. Furthermore, we must ensure our facilities are equipped for the future. Our commitment to air conditioning all classrooms, providing free SAT tutoring, and expanding pre-case seating reflects our dedication to creating an environment where every child can thrive. As your president, I will prioritize, I will prioritize transparency, open communications, and a community engagement. I encourage each and every one of you to stay involved, whether through attending board meetings, through participating, uh, in school events, joining PTA, PTSO, or sharing your insights of your initiatives. Your input is invaluable in sh- in shaping the future of our schools. In closing, I want to express my gratitude once more for this opportunity to serve. I am excited about what we can accomplish together in the coming year. Let us remember to put our differences and, put aside our differences and focus on our shared mission, inspiring, innovating, and elevating our students and our community. Together, we are one Edison, and together, we will ensure that the Edison School District is a place where every student can succeed, every family is heard, and our community shines bright. Thank you, and let's make this year a remarkable one for our students, our schools, and our community. Thank you. If no more board member comments, I will open up public comments. So, Mohan?
Hello, everyone, good evening. First of all, I would like to say happy new year to everybody and out there and here as well, and wishing you guys a very prosperous, healthy, and happy new year. That being said, um, congratulations to Jerry Shi on the presidentship here and Vishal for the board vice president and everyone else here. Thank you for your service, actually, and volunteering all these long hours, day by day, every time, to make sure our kids get everything they need in our schools. There's nine board members here, you guys are collectively working for only eighteen thousand students, nineteen schools, twenty-seven hundred staff members, and everyone here that is a taxpayer in Edison, and we want to make sure that you guys represent those voices. Above all, the future generation needs your votes to reflect what their needs are. And I hope you guys put that as a priority before you make a decision on any kind of voting that you need to do. Is it right for our kids? If so, then yes, if it's not, move forward. All I ask is just put that as your main priority, our kids deserve your votes, you are representing them. So I wanna say congratulations to everybody, thank you for your service, and wish you all well, thank you.
I'm, I'm supposed to ask for name and address, but for Mohan, you don't. For Mohan, no, no, you don't need. Any other public comments? Yes, Jeff.
Matt Revnacki, TA president. First of all, congratulations to the three board, new board members, Ronak, Jerry, and Ralph. And congratulations to Jerry and Vishal for being the leaders of the group for the next year. Uh, ETAs always looks forward to working with you, we believe in working together. Want to appreciate Dr. Alderelli, unfortunately, we ended two thousand twenty-four in not the greatest way, it was called the water main break here in Edison, but he was in communication with me throughout, including yesterday, with the return to school, and thank God we had water in all our buildings today. But there's one other comment I want to make, um, and this is a role model for what we talk about here with service and dedication into our students. Last week, we lost one of our former presidents, and it's not a political statement, regardless of what party you're part of, you know, and that was Jimmy Carter. You gotta admire the man for what he did, especially after the presidency. Um, the humanitarianism, the peace that he tried to push throughout the world, and that's a role model for any one of us, and what public service and, and, you know, what, what you can do to help people is about. So you know what, he'll never be remembered as being the greatest president in the world, he was a one-term president, but he will be remembered, I always say, one of the greatest, most upstanding men to ever hold the position. And I'm proud to say he was a graduate of Annapolis. So, Mr. Shi, by the way, this year, I can say it now that you're back on the board, Navy beat Army this year, you always were digging at me. So I had to get my little, little dig in. So, anyway, but, uh, again, happy new year to everyone, hopefully, two thousand twenty-five will be a great year, and I look forward to working cooperatively with the administration and the board as we always have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Always go Army, beat Navy.
Yes, Joyce. Joyce. No. Maria, you're next.
Joyce Ship Freeman, uh, happy new year to everyone, and congratulations to everyone in your positions that you're in, and congratulations for a hard race that you won. Also, I'd like to thank each person that's on the board there, because I know that it's a thankless job, and you do a hard work, and you're away from your family, hours on hours on end, and you, as a unit, try your best to move Edison forward. And, you know, I have selfish reasons for wanting Edison always to be number one, since that's, uh, where I graduated from, from JP Stevens, so that's what I want. But I appreciate you guys for allowing people freedom of speech and able that you guys don't have armed guards here so that we're not able to say and express ourselves freely, okay? Just saying, you know what I mean? So, thank each, eh, thank each and every one of you, and, uh, I'm hoping that the year is that much better because I know for myself that education is an equalizer. And my grandmother always said, that's something they can't take away from you, and that's how you have a better future, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Maria.
Maria Orchid, eighty-three Jefferson. I'd like to say congratulations to everyone, thank you so much for all the efforts. Thank you so much for all the efforts that you do. Congratulations to the three new board members. I look forward to working with you. I'd like to say thank you for Dr. Alderelli, for supporting the community. We appreciate it that you opened the schools when the residents didn't have services. I'd like to say thank you for passing the calendar. Now I can update my calendar and know where I'm going when I'm going. This Saturday, I'd like to say I think Tiny Mites is having a clothing drive. They support the Edison Jets, Edison Jets field, and that'll be from one to two o'clock. Now that I have the calendar, I can update my calendar. Thank you so much for all your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anthony?
Anthony Diamon, twenty-five Wiley. Happy New Year, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Shi, Mr. Erico, and Mr. Patel. I don't know why the hell you guys wanted to come back and do this, but.
I'm asking myself the same question, Anthony.
I also like to recognize the former elected officials here. Mr. Rivera's here, I see Mr. Mohan, Joyce. I think that's a great example they, they carry by continuing to show their faces coming to these meetings and, you know, leading by example, so thank you to them. Lost my train of thought there. And that's, oh, you know what I wanted to say? The, I'd like to see, on a completely separate note, the high schools possibly be opened up and used for tournaments, you know, for these different sporting events. Wrestling comes to mind because I see these other districts, as I travel now to the other districts, Little Nathan, in wrestling. Which I'm, I, it's a great sport to go see, actually, wrestling. These kids give it, they're all, it's really impressive. But these other districts, they make a ton of money with these tournaments. So I don't know how that would work out and who, who needs to talk to what. But that, that, even though the Jets are opening up their field, there's no reason why with the, the two high schools, at least, we can't open it up to, to some of these tournaments and, and get some of that revenue here. It's, I'm just telling you, these places are packed and, you know, I'm sure the parents would, would like that as well. So, just a, just a thought. That's really it, so. Good to see Jeff. How you doing, Jeff? I saw him over there. All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the suggestion, we'll look into it. Anybody, anybody else? Yeah, David.
Happy New Year and congratulations to the three newly elected board members. And congratulations to Jerry and Vishal for the board president and vice president. And also thanks to the rest of the board members to volunteer your time and help to run the school. And thanks to the superintendent to run a so large school, eighteen thousand student. The election last year runs together with the president election. Means that there are a lot of, you know, voters turned out in Edison to vote. So what we are like, the voters are expecting is that based on the agenda, the priority of the school, they give us a very clear answer for the future direction of the BOE. So hopefully, this year, we wish all of the board members work together. If you need any kind of like, you know, the kind of, you know, direction that taxpayers, parents want to go, look at this election result. That's the thing we wish, that all of the board members, together with the school superintendent and admin, to work together to make the Edison school a better one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any first timers? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And I want to say congratulations to Jerry, Ronik, and Ralph for getting back on the board. I really don't know you, Ronik, but I've heard good things. Anja spoke very highly of you, so I wish you the very best of luck. Ralph, you're a pro at this, you've been doing it for a long time. Jerry as well, you know, I think you have a good head on your shoulder. You know, I know we disagreed in the past, but I think we all have the same intention of, of moving this district forward. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Chris, my man, you're one of the most solid people I met. So, good job throwing your hat in the ring for the vice presidency. I honestly think you deserve it. You, you've put your heart into this. And I, I really wish that you, the vote would have went your way because I do think you deserve it. Nothing gets you Vishal, but you and I just don't see eye to eye. I really don't want to discuss what I know. I'm just going, that'll be for another day. But Chris, I give you mad props for throwing your hat in the ring and, and doing, and doing what's best for Edison. Other than that, I want to wish everybody good luck on the board. I, I appreciate you. I know the level of work, it's difficult, it's hard, it's hard to agree. It's easy to disagree. So my suggestion is, you know, meet, talk, discuss, keep everybody in the loop. Assign committees that are actually productive, where individuals are working, are paired to their talents, not just going to a committee and just to get a vote of some sort. So I wish you all the best of luck, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. And thank you, Brian, for your service on the board. Any other first timers? Any other first timers? Sinan? Mohan? Name my address, please.
Moh Patel, Earth. Okay. First of all, thank you for your service, Brian, for the past year, three years that you were on the board. Also, I want to reiterate what Anthony said, he is a hundred percent on point. We had a basketball tournament for the, uh, boys' basketball team, the Hawks, at JP Stevens this past weekend before the holidays. So he is a hundred percent correct. We do need to invest a little more time into our sports. And I urge all the parents, it's, it's so sad to see when I go to these games, you see the away teams' parents showing up at our home team game. And our parents are not even to be seen. There's a few parents, literally, you could count them in four of your fingers, right? And it's sad to see that you don't support the kids that you need to encourage with the, with the energy that you bring to the games. So I encourage all the parents that are watching to go out and invest in your kids, invest some time and be the, be the force that brings them to their greatness. And I feel we need to create a little bit more of a culture within our schools. The, the principals need to do a better job. Mr. Ross does an amazing job promoting all the students and sports. We need to do that in all the schools, middle schools, especially in JP. We need to make sure that the kids know that there's a game going on so they show up for their friends as well. So if we can have the different departments work on creating a culture that is going to enhance the experience for our kids, that's what we also need. APs and all that is all great, they're going to have those brain synapses working, but you need to get the whole brain synapses working. So sports is a key, make sure the parents listen and go to their games. That being said, Friday, tomorrow, there's a game going on against North Plainfield for the boys' basketball team. So show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohan. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Sinan, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second? Mr. Romano and Mr. Lugo. Oh. Mr. Lugo, right?
Mr. Lugo.
Yes, it? All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, meeting's adjourned.